All right.
My mic is...
This one's on. All right, agenda.
Mr. Mayor, we have no proposed changes to the agenda this evening.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Motion by Councilmember Byrd, second by Councilmember Schwittenberger. Did I say it right? Just don't motion anything. Every time, every time there's a motion, every time.
He was saying Jean Paul.
Yeah, there you go.
All right. Oh, we still have to vote, don't we? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Presentations, proclamations, we have none. Public comment?
Good evening, council members. Rich, Mr. Mayor, city staff, and Chief Brady. Tim from the Elko New Market Chamber of Commerce just wanted to stop by again this evening. Thank you so much for hosting an awesome lunch and learn.
So it's always invigorating to come sit down, hear what kind of development Elko New Market is coming in because we're able to then share that. Do people ask us some questions sometimes? And to get that, the offer of, hey, have a law enforcement view of our businesses, our community, our schools, our libraries, public safety was a great message and got great comments afterwards from people too saying, hey, those kind of neat functions. So, thank you for the city for sponsoring.
Ladies' night will be the next big thing with the chamber. That's going to be 12 here at Elko New Market. We'll be starting kind of that cornering of the businesses involving not just people who are coming in on the afternoon, but we want to have fun that way. But some of these businesses and certain sponsorships of the chamber we wanted to present to you guys this evening are Park Niclet, Laneville, Fish Rock, Lee Meyer, Body Works, Blue Sky Flower Farm, Farmers Insurance, Tim Sodowsky, ICU Mobile, Twin Cities, Thrive It Financial, Josh Mullis, We Go Real Feet, New Market Bank, Tree Eyes Wellness, and Holy Cross Catholic School. They've all been very active and supportive in that event. So it's nice that you guys can do that as well. In addition to that, we have sponsors that are not members of the chamber bringing that in and making, bringing in involvement and making it fun for the ladies and people at the event. So there are 12 additional businesses that are not directly affiliated with the chamber that are getting that involvement.
So come out on ladies' night, meet the rest of the people coming around. It's a great time just to kind of mingle and be around town.
After ladies' night, there's going to be Morning Brew at Firefly Coffee Company. That's pretty big on the...
In the future, I'm sure we'll let you know. Probably April 23rd because if you don't write it down, it doesn't matter if I'm accurate. Don't worry, we'll remind you. But if you're gonna go to a Morning Brew, could you imagine a place with more fresh coffee than Firefly Coffee? March meeting, we did have Mayor step down, share some information with us, visit the chamber. And the YMCA came in and they updated the chamber board on kind of their perspective of what's happening versus kind of getting that information from public. I think you guys can all appreciate what you read on public isn't always accurate. So it was nice to have them come down and share that information. And again, I'll just repeat, let us know at the chamber how we can help support the city. If that's going to be supporting activities, if that's going to be helping to be a voice to remind of meetings, share information out there, get that out there. I think that's kind of our role when the chamber founded, was to help be that supporting situation. Our voice can maybe be a little bit more vocal than yours. So let us know how we can help. Any questions?
Before I go, anyone, I, just going back to the lunch and learn, you know, immediate takeaway is what could have been done differently, what worked great, what maybe didn't work so well? I mean, what can we do to do a better job next time?
Great question. You're asking the dumbest guy on the board and I didn't prepare for that answer.
And I put you in the spotlight.
Yeah, I don't really have any answer for that. The feedback I got was that it was good.
Okay.
You know, I think my response personally, not going back to the chamber, is, is I'd always love to see more people in the chairs. Great information. And so do we take that and build from that and use that to say, hey, this was some excellent information that came out? You miss it, it's hard, you know, during the day, it's... It's gonna be, so one of the things that was is do we record that? So we have that available as something we can continue to put out there. The info's that good?
That was actually something Mayor Julius and I were talking about is that we should've recorded it and put it up.
With hindsight, we make it better next time. You know, it's kind of that, you know, taking it in the notes. And we know that's something that we're working on as well as having that post-meeting and jotting down the notes. Because the things we do annually, that's how you learn to write it down and prove it.
Yeah. I think so much of what the chamber does is almost taken for granted in the community. I mean, you really put, you're responsible for so many of the events and so many of the activities. So I really appreciate all you guys do, so.
Thank you guys.
Anyone else for public comment? Nope? All right, we'll close public comment. Consent agenda. You want to have any items they want to discuss or have removed?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Motion by Tim.
Second.
Sent by Ceparsan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No public hearings, no general business. On to reports.
Item under administration is proclamation policy. We're looking for discussion from council whether or not they want to pursue a proclamation policy. The research on the topic was done by Haley, our community development intern. So I'd like her to make the presentation on this.
Good evening, everyone. All right, so Tom had asked me to do a bit of research on proclamation policies and draft a potential policy for you all to look over and discuss and consider in the future. And it was based on sort of how we had done proclamation approvals in the past, which is very informal. Many times it would be an organization or a group sending an email to Tom, Tom reviewing that. And then if we had approved it in the past, it was likely approved again because we had done it before. However, Tom has indicated to me that we've been seeing more requests and those requests have the potential to become more controversial or political in nature or even maybe not represent the council or the city's views as a whole. And so just to give staff time to be able to review those, a formal, more formal policy would give staff time and just guidelines to go or follow in order to make sure that those requests that are being approved do represent the city and the council's views as a whole. So during my research, I found that the majority of Minnesota cities actually don't have a formal proclamation policy, yet they're not uncommon. And the cities that do have a policy, they're all very similar. They have sort of the same criteria and the same guidelines. And you'll see that I've included most of those elements in the draft before you. And again, it's just really to eliminate some of the potential issues that could arise moving forward and increase efficiency and practicality of approving requests and really just avoid approval bias, which comes with one person approving requests. So if the approval is recommended or recommended with changes, the draft that is, then we can make those edits and bring it forth at another meeting for you all. So I'll turn it back over to Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel.
I like the draft you did. I don't know if it's necessary, but if we've been having other issues of borderline, do we do a proclamation or do we not do a proclamation, then I'm all for, let's put the draft in place. Put this proclamation in place.
Has there been issues?
No, not insofar that there's been a thing associated with one. But I'm trying to not wait until we have a problem to solve it. I don't know if there's any harm in having something in place. The thing is really having something in place that reflects what the council wants as far as parameters for doing these. It does make it a lot more efficient. There's also procedural reasons for it. Let's say I get an email from the Lions and they would like the council to declare it to be National Lions Week or something like that. It needs to be put on the council tomorrow to make it by the date that it's National Lions Week. I don't have the option to go out and ask the council at the next meeting if they want to do a proclamation. The other part of it is in part due to the process is there's no clear who makes the decision what's on or what's off. So in the past, it's really fallen to me. And to a certain extent, I'm uncomfortable being the person who determines what the council may consider as a proclamation or not. You don't put a proclamation on the agenda, having the council make the decision at the time. It's going to be something you are going to actually proclaim that night. And so this just kind of gives some guidelines that if it falls in this box, the council's going to be okay with it. If it doesn't fall in the box, we've predetermined that this is stuff that we're just made a decision, we're not going to do as proclamations. But it also addresses the stuff that's kind of gray. You want to provide recognition of specific individuals. We might, let's say with the valedictorian at one of the school districts is from our community and we might want to recognize that academic achievement or want to recognize an Eagle Scout or a Girl Scout that's achieved a gold award or something like that. We want, if we want to do those types of things, the policy addresses that in the manner in which we would do so. It also sets priorities of where we want to try and promote that type of recognition rather than kind of a catch-as-catch-can approach. So it just basically gives some direction to staff and how you want us to do our job as well.
I think it makes perfect sense. And I mean, overall, I think the only bullet point I have a question about is proclamations will not be issued for events organization with no direct relationship with the city? So it just, that seems broad.
So some of the things you might get is, I'll come up with some kind of ask for organization, but let's say there's the national organization of unicorns and they want us to declare May, you know, the week of May 5th, Unicorn Week or something like that.
It's my favorite weekend here.
You strike me as a unicorn. That really doesn't have anything to do with the city, city business, et cetera. They're just looking for any and whatever avenue to try and promote their particular cause. The policy, and we made some assumptions when we drafted the policy, is that based on past practice, that most of our proclamations would be related to the city and city business. So for instance, declaring it First Responders Week or National City Clerks Week or National City Parks Week or something like that, where it relates to what we do as an organization and how we serve the community. Is there still some subjectivity? Yes, there's no way you could write the policy to cover every possible circumstance that comes in. And I think in practice, when there's something that's a little gray, that's where I talk to the mayor and the acting mayor, maybe give them a call and say, do you think this fits inside the box or not? And I get a little bit of additional feedback. But that's going to be occasional, that I would need to do that.
One of the other ones is, you just mentioned a few just individuals, you know, and one of the line items is must affect, must, which is a pretty strong word, affect a broad group of people, not issued for individuals. And you just used two examples of individuals that we could potentially do, so.
I believe that we address it further down in the policy. It talks about individual recognition through certificates of recognition. Unless I'm mistaken, Haley?
No, I was correct.
Yep. So in those instances, it wouldn't be proclamation. We've just said for these types of things, we're going to do certificates of recognition for those individuals.
Is that how we would then, like deceased individuals I saw was on here, retirement, is that then how you would handle that as a...
So a good example would be local baseball manager for the Elko Express, Terry Fredrickson. When he achieved his 800 wins, or is it 1,000 wins? I think he's at close to 1,000, but I think it was 800 wins at the time. But he, we, he was recognized for that achievement by the council under this policy. You would get a certi, we would still do that type of recognition, but it would be done as a certificate of recognition. We'd still do all the normal pomp and circumstance to promote that achievement and talk about contributions not only to the team, but what that means to the communities.
But, but, correct me if I'm wrong, in here there's a couple of musts.
Now, or maybe those instead of must, it should, it could be generally should be?
So with the policy, you want to have it black or white because that's how you make the decision. If it should, then you start getting back into the certain level of subjectivity. And there still will be some, but you want to limit it as much as possible from a practical standpoint. But if the council wants us to open that box a little further, we can do that, but maybe we take a look at how we craft the language so it doesn't leave it totally subjective.
I'm just thinking that, you know, you're basically eliminating that at all from, you know, that we've done.
Well, the situation always exists, it's a policy. Council can vary from policy. So let's say a council member becomes aware of a situation that may merit either a proclamation or a recognition and it doesn't fit in the box, the council can always decide as a council to vary from that policy in those circumstances. And given those circumstances, we may even suggest to the council that we vary from it. But this gives us the starting point for us to be able to do a sword on what's coming through.
Well, I think it also is a resource for citizens, community, whatever organizations to know, kind of, this is where you can turn to and say, here's our policy on it. If you have questions, great, but at least it's something to pump them to as a resource and a tool.
So...
It feels like it's a, it's rather than a tool to, you know, I guess, format what proclamations we're going to make, it's more or less a tool for you to be able to say no.
Yep, or when we should say yes, or what we promote. So what I was going to say is, if this policy says that we're going to recognize these types of things, achievements, and it talks about youth achievements, this is where we go and talk to the school districts and local youth organizations and say, when you have people that have notable achievements, let us know. We would like to recognize them. We've decided as a city, we're going, we want to provide public recognition of those achievements.
Andrea, have you had a chance to review this?
I have, yeah.
And everything legally sounds, looks sound to you?
Yeah.
Any other thoughts or comments?
I like it.
Oh, I like it.
Josh?
Mm-hmm.
All right, I think we're all okay moving forward as drafted.
Nicely done.
Good job.
All right. I assume public works, there's no comments to be passed on?
That would be correct.
Police, you got anything for us, chief?
It's been wonderful being here. My ninth shift as the police chief. Happy to be here.
We are thankful you're here.
Thank you.
So you're going to be primarily days, I assume?
Yes, Monday through Friday.
Can you tell you he's doing from three in the morning till 10 o'clock in the morning?
He's got a Thursday through Sunday.
Yeah.
Before your interview, you had worked an overnight before coming in for one of your interviews.
Yes, I, for 23 years, I've worked overnights and weekends and holidays, so.
Wow.
Yeah.
Not straight, but all through that time.
Is this a welcomed adjustment or a little weird adjustment?
Awesome adjustment. Sleeping at night, sleeping when it's dark is awesome. And then being around with the wife and kids in the evening is awesome, so.
Sure.
It's been a great adjustment.
Well, you've made a good progression so far, so.
Yes.
Thank you. And I have nothing for a report.
That's even better.
Yeah.
Even better.
That was right, right, Tom? You said, "Don't say anything." Right, boss? Right, boss? Next month, I will have a great report.
Fire department, I'll assume there's nothing. Engineering? All right. Community developer? Haley?
Welcome to Renee, guys.
Yay.
All right, so Renee and I have been doing a lot of work talking about mobile food units, which we all know as food trucks. The state definition is mobile food unit, so you'll hear me refer to them as that moving forward. And I've just prepared a brief presentation to sort of supplement the information that you were all provided in the packet for this meeting. So the first question, why are we talking about food trucks or mobile food units now? There's a number of reasons. One, just due to increasing popularity. They have been operating in city limits on occasion, not a lot, but a few times. They have the potential to become a public nuisance if not regulated or if they start to operate more frequently, just depending on like the noise, smell, light they emit, where they're parking, they could become a fire hazard or traffic hazard as well. And then the... And then they also have the potential to present unfair competition with brick and mortar food establishments, just based on zoning and building requirements that brick and mortar establishments have to abide by and that food trucks or mobile food units don't because they aren't a structure in the city. And then also, and I will talk more specifically about this last bullet point a little bit later on, but the current regulation as a transient merchant, it's not specific to mobile food units. The language is a bit ambiguous and vague and it tends to regulate more strictly the person as a merchant rather than the establishment, which is serving food to people. And so many of those items listed under like public nuisance and the negative impacts, they aren't regulated under transient merchant currently. So a bit of background about how the state currently regulates mobile food units, there's three definitions which are applicable to this discussion, one being mobile food unit and then the others being seasonal temporary food stand and seasonal permanent food stand. And they're fairly similar, a little bit different, just being that they can operate typically 21 days annually in any one place and then they are to move around areas. Mobile food unit being what you see here in this picture, what you typically think of when you hear food truck. And then the seasonal temporary and seasonal permanent food stands being more of what you would see at like a state or county fair, a little bit more permanent in style, but still mobile. So continuing with state statute and state regulations, all mobile food units and food stands operating in Scott County are licensed and regulated by the state, specifically the Minnesota Department of Health. And the process is actually pretty strict and very comprehensive. So they look at a plan review, which is submitted by the entity, and I mean, they look at the proposed menu, they look at the establishment, they look at the equipment they're using. You can see their, their utility plan, how they're going to dispose of their waste products, things like that. And then they also, of course, do an inspection of the unit or the entity that they will be serving from. And in addition, all of the mobile food units and food stands must operate in compliance with the Minnesota Food Code, which other food establishments must follow as well. The state also places a few restrictions on mobile food units and food stands, one being that all food storage and preparation must occur in the unit or another licensed food establishment. And again, that's just getting to the point of food safety and following that Minnesota Food Code. So someone operating a food truck could not prepare something in their private home and then go and sell it out of their truck. It would have to be from a food establishment, a licensed food establishment. And also the state restricts catering operations from these trucks or food stands unless it's approved by the local jurisdiction. So for example, the city of Elko New Market could choose to allow catering if they so wanted. And then within city limits, these entities would be able to cater. But under the state, they are not. Again, it's getting at those food safety risks. Trying to put out a lot of food, large amounts of food in a smaller entity or business or truck can increase the risk.
So that's different from us having an event here, they're just parked in the parking lot, we go to their truck, buy the food. Catering means they would make the food out there, bring it in here to us, kind of thing?
Yeah, so catering would just be like no sale. So we could, if we approve it, invite a food truck, the city would pay for the food and then people would go get it. And the rest of the public wouldn't be able to buy anything. But if we were having an event, they could operate out on the street and each person could, yes, potentially just go buy. Yes. So going back to how we regulate, as mentioned before, the current city code regulates mobile food units as a transient merchant and that's located in the Business and Licensing Regulations, similar to the definitions you see by the state. It's just they're moving around, no more than 14 consecutive days in one place. And the license is $65 per person. And a piece on that, going back to how this regulation regulates the person and not the establishment, is under the current code, multiple people operating from one mobile food unit would all have to be licensed. So if there's two or three people, they would each have to technically get a transient merchant license. So we did some research on area cities and that's included, summary in the package. And what I found is there's really three ways to regulate mobile food units outside of, as a transient merchant. So this is really looking at just regulating as a mobile food unit. One would be no regulation at all. And some cities have purposefully not regulated, they're exempt from regulations many times in order to stem economic development. In the case of Fire Lake, they decided not to because it wasn't an issue, so they just didn't want to create something when there was no problem documented. And then the other two being regulating one with a license and one without a license. Most commonly, it is with a license, which would require the, from that unit.
And do, does anybody know, does New Prague and Fire Lake have a lot? I mean, I can see during the lakefront days, there's probably a ton during that time, Fire Lake, New Prague, I don't know.
They have them at every single location.
Really?
And they purposely don't regulate them.
All right. So then if decided to regulate or if directed by the council to pursue this further or draft an ordinance, there are a number of considerations that must be made. One being really how we regulate them. So it could be one of those three options, as mentioned, to regulate as a mobile food unit in the Business of Licensing Regulations. Or there's an option just to include some more clarifying language under the current ordinance as a transient merchant. So there's different ways in which that could be done. Do we require a license? Do we not require a license? If we do, is it annual, daily, temporary? Some cities do a combination of the three or just one. The fees associated with that and then application requirements that would go with the license. And then location, so really where can I operate? Some don't define. Some cities have created a specific like mobile food unit district in which they can operate. Others say they can operate just in like the business or commercial districts. So there's really varies by city. For reference, I've thrown in the zoning map here. It's a little bit difficult to see, but for example, we could decide to only allow mobile food units in the business district, which is the red, in the main commercial corridors. And then continuing with other considerations, really just the performance standards about how they operate. And again, this goes back to the things that aren't currently regulated as a transient merchant. It's really getting at the establishment itself and what that can do or what the mobile food unit can do. And that's a missing as a transient merchant. Prohibited practices, going back to catering. And then one piece that I haven't touched on yet is whether or not they should be able to operate during community events. And some cities allow them only at community events, some don't allow them at community events. So again, it is whatever the city decides to do. And then enforcement of the regulations. So who is going to be enforcing? How are we enforcing? Many cities, it's just complaint-based. We have solicited input from the police department and many of these regulations, if regulated, are really a zoning issue or a code violation and not a criminal offense. However, when food trucks are operating outside of business hours, the question is who is responding and how do we handle that? That can be a question that needs to be answered. So like I mentioned, we solicited input from the police department and a number of other stakeholders. The first and most comprehensive being the Planning Commission. They were the ones that really answered every single question that we brought forth to them. And their general response was, yes, let's regulate, let's create an ordinance, but let's make those regulations contained in that ordinance minimal. So we have some sort of guidelines, but we're not over-regulating. And they also, I would like to point out how to comment about exempting youth fundraising activities from the current peddlers, listers, and transient merchant ordinance. Because as the ordinance is written, they would technically need a license to sell Girl Scout cookies or sell the popcorn that boys get. or sell the popcorn that Boy Scouts, Boy Scouts sell. So that could be an amendment that is in part of this or discussed.
Teaching the scouts to bring their lunch.
Well, it depends on the nature in which they're, it depends on the nature in which they're doing it. So if they're sitting out in front of the hardware store selling the cookies, yes. But if they're going door to door, they're not, they're actually.
So I'm sitting at a food truck selling popcorn.
Yeah, yeah. So it depends on the circumstances and how they're selling it, so.
Another stakeholder group was the Parks Commission. And they didn't really provide comprehensive feedback. It was more specifically just to how would we handle them in parks? And generally, they all supported allowing them to operate in parks. They were a little bit concerned about having a mobile food unit in a residential district for like hours on end, if they were sitting there for five or six or seven hours all day long. But were generally supportive, but did make a comment about not allowing mobile food units during community events.
The Parks Commission specifically said that?
Yes.
To not allow them during community events?
Correct.
Did they give a rationale?
Yeah.
I think it was more along the lines of competing with the local vendors and the nonprofits that are putting on these events to raise money. And that's the same feedback we got from the CCEC where they saw the benefit in having them and they could draw more people in or just provide different options. But they didn't want to take away from the profits that those local organizations were there for.
That question has come up historically related to specifically the community festival. It was prob, we, we haven't had a lot of food trucks that have come, but a couple of years, we did have food trucks that just kind of showed up. And during that event, as you guys know, there's a lot of local nonprofit organizations that sell food as a fundraiser for their organizations. And so the question been raised, can, how can we do that if they're, if they're competing with, with us? So it's one of the many reasons why this question has come up in the past, in addition to the fact that our current ordinance is a little unwieldy to deal with it generally. That's been one of the questions that's come up over the years that's prompted us to raise, to bring the topic forward.
Correct. And so the feedback from the CCEC was pretty similar to the parks. They didn't want to allow food trucks on public property during community events, but felt that they couldn't really say no if someone wanted to have a food truck on their private property. But they also had a great discussion about how we could invite food trucks to come in if they were to agree to like a give back sort of program, where a certain percentage of the proceeds were then given back to the city or an organization that the event was for. Or even if the licensing fee was somehow waived, so they didn't have to get the license, but then that money was then given back to the organization, something of the sorts. Just a way to prevent or eliminate that competition, but still get the benefits that come with having different food options and inviting a food truck to the event.
So I think the concept there is that if they're functioning as part of the event itself. So other reasons, when I worked in Northern America, they would have vendors that would come in and as part of the event, for example, they, they sold tickets and the vendors would collect the tickets and then based on the tickets, they would get a certain percentage of the, of the door essentially, of the, of the tape.
That's the concept, I think, that was really being discussed. And that has been discussed about the CC and the P, CCEC in the past when this topic has come up, about maybe you bring food trucks into Wagner Park after the parade as part of the festivities, but you negotiate a deal with it. And so I think the idea is that, yeah, if they're part of the event and you've already pulled a permit for the event for them to be there, maybe you don't need to charge them a separate fee.
Or maybe they're only, maybe they're allowed to be in town, but only if they're part of one of the official events, community events that sponsors the parks.
Yeah, and Jody with the Fire Relief Association has done this before. And I think there was one food truck in specific that she had worked with and done the give back program. And she said it worked really well and has just again, done that before and so can speak more to that. Another stakeholder group was the Chamber of Commerce. They had at that point just said, no, we shouldn't regulate them at this time. And there was really no further discussion on that. We also attempted to solicit input from business owners via inviting them in for a meeting or just letting them know that they could email or call us with feedback. And then we didn't hear anything back. And then the police department, so we talked to Chief Jewell and Officer Bell. And they gave more input on just like the practicalities and the small things that we might not think about. So the hours of operation could be set to match that of the noise ordinance. We should require a trash receptacle to be put out for pedestrians that are buying from the unit or the stand. And then just to be aware of parking considerations and where they're parked and what parking is available. And then again, to just clearly lay out the penalties for noncompliance. And it goes back to that enforcement piece and who's enforcing that and what the penalties will be. So a budget impact for this item currently to date, it's just been staff time. So the time taken to prepare and reach out to stakeholders. Future implications will depend on how the council decides to regulate. So it could just be again, staff time making ordinance amendments. Or if licensed, it would be the time to process the applications and then the fees associated with that license. And so really the two big questions for the council are, one, should mobile food units be regulated? And if yes, how should they be regulated or what approach should be taken? So that goes back to regulate as an MFU with or without a license or keep it as is as a transient merchant with no change or some additional changes. So at this point, I will turn it back to the council and to you, Mr. Mayor, for discussion. And if you have questions, I'll be your answer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel?
Yeah, oh, and I think there's one more option. And I think, well, it kind of goes to my point in person. I don't think they should be regulated. I think, I agree with the price of Fire Lake's approach. I think to get some of that business down here, I think would be great. If we ran into a problem, so the opportunity to do it in the future. If we were to run into any issues, I think another bullet point that I would propose is to then exempt them from the transient merchant current ordinances so that it kind of gets them out of there so it doesn't cause any headaches or issues or, so.
Who else has thoughts?
I definitely say regulate.
Okay.
I don't think that there needs to be a fee, but I do believe that they are providing food to our residents. We need to, as a city, make certain that they are abiding by the rules and regulations of the state of Minnesota and the Department of Health. These are our residents we're talking about. We're talking about illnesses if they're not doing it correctly. So I think we need to check all of their paperwork from the state of Minnesota, make certain that they are legal and licensed to be able to be doing a food truck. And I, I don't feel that they need, there needs to be a fee, but I do feel that every time they come into town, they need to be checking in with the city and proving their proof of liability insurance, their proof of everything from the Department of Health, showing that they are legal and okay to come in and take food to our residents.
So a, as a restaurant owner, is that, are you kind of regulated in that same capacity?
Absolutely.
So it's all, kind of what you're saying is it's almost unfair. I mean, we could potentially have no regulate, regulations on a food truck coming in, but yet a restaurant who has paid money and puts stakes on the community, nothing.
I guess I would just counter that to say that they are regulated. They're regulated by the state of Minnesota to the same level.
But we don't know that if they just show up at.
But the state of Minnesota knows that and that's why they're there to regulate.
But I could go out and get a food truck tomorrow, put slap any old name on there, put some food in it, drive up to Don's house and say, I'm here to make you tacos. And it should be like, okay, cool.
And I buy them tacos.
A lot of people do it.
Sure.
I'm just saying that there are people out there that will do that to get away with it. How is anybody going to find out about it? They're trusting me, they're trusting me, I don't need licenses. I can just keep moving around from city to city to city and make my money.
I think the enforcement part of it is that if it's a mobile target, it's harder. I mean, the, the state simply doesn't have the resources to go on a patrol for food trucks.
No, they have no way to launch it.
Where a brick and mortar location, you know where they are, they have a, they have a storefront. They know that they're there and they'll go and do the inspection. A compliant food truck, of course, they'll come out, they'll inspect it and they'll license it. I think the concern and the council can debate the real risk of it is that if a food truck, it's harder to enforce that, but we know if they're operating in town, they had, they had at least demonstrated that. So that's the argument for it. There's obviously two sides to the issue, but I think that's why some cities do do it. All we're doing is verifying that they are licensed to operate if they're going to operate in the community. We're not going to go and do inspections on them or anything like that. We're not a resource, we don't have a resource, it's not within our wheelhouse to do anything.
But I think some of the examples of some of the proposed stuff would be to go above and beyond just checking to make sure that their license is valid. Though we're setting restrictions on times or look, I mean, so that is to a whole other.
Correct. So, so if, so and that's one of the questions, if the, if the direction from the council is not to regulate them, that's not to regulate them. They're exempt from the ordinances, so they can do whatever, whenever, wherever they, they want. We would not regulate them as far as where they park. It would just be the normal city's parking ordinance.
So they could open up a taco stand in, in front of Don's house at three in the morning?
At three o'clock in the morning.
So, so I wanted to clarify with the council, when you're saying we shouldn't regulate them, are you talking we shouldn't license them or are you saying that we shouldn't regulate them at all? Or do we want that, so there's, there's differences to that. So I want to make sure that we're all using this common language when we're talking about how we approach them.
I think that we need to keep in mind when we're thinking about this too is the community events. I was at that meeting when we were talking about taking away from the benefit of the nonprofit organizations. Or the events. I think at, in, with those events, they need to be invited. We're frying chicken and we're.
We don't ask Firehouse to shut the doors on days of events. We don't ask other businesses in town to stop serving food because we have.
But if we're, but if. We're already established here, they're coming.
But if we're frying chicken to raise money and then a food truck comes and they're trying to sell fried chicken and.
For their own profit.
For their own profit, yeah.
Profit that's going to go back to the Boy Scouts.
So if we invite the food trucks and then, there are plenty of food trucks that'll do the give back. Or we just have fish taco stand, invite a fish taco stand and still do our fried chicken.
If we're not allowing them to operate, they need to be regulated. And they need to be licensed. Because if, if they're not, how are, how are they going to know our, our rules? How are they going to know what our community events are? We have to define what a community event is in the ordinance because if, or the policy. Because if it's not, then we could call anything a community event, right? So, I mean, there's, there's a lot that needs to go into this if we're going to do this. But if we're going to allow them to operate here, we have to permit it. We don't have a choice. We have to do it. If, if you don't, then you can't have a city employee going up to them or the police going up to them and saying, you can't be here.
Sorry. I'm personally the position, I think, you have to have some, like I, I don't know that I love the idea of going in residential areas. I mean, I, I live down the road from Don, down the one taco stand.
It's a nice night out though, wouldn't it be sweet to have it at the bottom of Boulder Point and right there? I think it'd be awesome, a whole food truck sandwiching it.
And how, and how is that fair to tell a food truck that they can't, but the ice cream truck can go around and go anywhere?
Because ice cream trucks are not food trucks, right, Haley?
So typically, ice cream trucks are exempt. They're allowed to operate in the public right of the way, so like on the streets, as you would imagine. That's just how many cities do it. But there is potential to regulate it as a mobile food unit and they would be subject to the same regulations.
And when we talk about residential areas, it's becoming more and more common when people have wedding receptions, graduation parties, et cetera. They have a food trucker to come to the event to provide those usually as under, and then you're allowing catering as part of that. So as you can see, when you get into this issue, there's a lot of moving, there's a lot of moving parts to it. And those are some of the details we would get into after we get that higher level direction from the council.
We could be very burdensome. I think staff's opinion is if the council chose that we were going to license them. So you can regulate them. You can have, not require a license, but say here are the rules. I think the police department's position is they're not going to check the rules before they come into town. They're just going to operate. But if they do have to get the license, it's the same reason we like, for instance, require a permit at no fee for recreational fires. It creates an opportunity where somebody's been given and they've been shown and there's no excuse for not knowing the rules for operations. It allows us to do that. And along with that, we would verify if they have their state licensing, et cetera. The council can decide whether we charge a fee or not. Staff's opinion is that if there was a fee, it would have to be very limited because our staff time for that is not great. You could, we could charge a higher fee, we could place more, I mean, we can do more. When we've talked about a staff, the council went that direction. We didn't feel we, it had to be a significant process. We would recommend that it is a administrative process. It doesn't need to come to council or anything like that. And expense associated with it, if there was a fee assigned, the fee would not have to be great to cover our costs for processing.
Could you not require them to post our, our rules as a community in their, in their unit?
Potentially, yeah.
I mean, that would solve the, the problem that they're not going to know our rules because if, if they're posted in their, in the unit, then, you know, if, you know, if the chief is out and he sees a, a mobile food unit and goes up to it and says, I just want to check and make sure you got your rules posted and you got a permit. And they don't have it, shut them down and make them leave.
So they would have, in that case, if I understand right, they would have to be licensed as well and post it. Or at least. Otherwise, how else would they get the rules to post?
Yeah, I mean, the trucks have to post their food license on the truck. So any customer could go up and say, I see your, oh, it's posted right here. The state already regulates that you have to display your license and.
Which I get that.
John is correct. If you also then had, I don't know, I haven't read all the ordinances, but a solicitor has to display the permit as they're soliciting in many cities. So if you simply had on the side of the truck, it would aid us to maybe even just drive by, see the permit and then continue on.
So really what I was getting at is we're talking about now regulating, requiring a license and requiring them to post our rules somewhere. So even a third step beyond what's being proposed.
With those rules to be bulleted on the permit itself, I mean, it wouldn't have to be multiple documents, it would be one thing. And, and like Tom said, I mean, it could be just as simple as not even require a fee, just require them to come here and fill out a form and show their, show their state, state forms and, and then we write it, or the staff writes it up or writes, you know, signs it off and gives them their permit and where they go.
So on one side is the permit that's signed by the staff, the other side is our rules and regulations.
I mean, I, I kind of lean more towards, you know, Josh, but it's, I don't know. It's not that cut and dry because, you know, you look at like fire rescue days, for example. You know, yeah, I understand there are, you know, nonprofits that raise money at fire rescue days. And I want to be sympathetic of that, I want them to do well. But at the same time, how would fire rescue days be enhanced if maybe a couple food trucks came to town? Would more people show up? Would there be more potential opportunities for the nonprofits? Would be, and would it be an overall enhancement to the community to allow something like that? I don't know that it's, I mean, and maybe the compromise is some sort of give back or, or what have you. That's kind of my thought, but, and also at the same time, I, I sympathize with Kate and really anyone that wants to open up a, restaurants are so expensive. I mean, not just the building, but all the equipment that you have to put into it. Having staff, managing staff, being there day in, the day out. Being there on the days where it's low, you're not making any money, but yet you still have to be old. That, that's a huge commitment that people are making and for lack of a better way of putting it, food trucks are kind of a lazy way around that or smart way, depending on how you look at it. I don't know, I'd like to find a way to make it as, I'd like to find a way to get food trucks in our city. I'd like to have them be an active part of our city, but not, not create the impression that we're going to be overly burdensome. Because we can't, I mean, we kind of already have that reputation that we are an overly burdensome community to do business with. Whether it's fair or not, it's relevant, but it's something that we're already kind of fighting against. So I don't know that I have an answer or from my. So, I don't know that I have an answer or from my personal firm recommendation, I just would like to see this move forward in some way, shape or form, so. And we're kinda all over the place as a council on this.
You're going your direction, right?
Yeah.
I just wanted to be a little Republican tonight, so.
I like you.
Kinda fun and different.
I don't, I don't, I don't think that we need to charge a fee, but I think we at least need to know.
Who's here, who's.
Yeah, who's here and who's, I mean, any food truck could just go and, or pretending to be a food truck. Nowadays, you don't know who they are, they could just come and park in the park and wait for the kids to come up and then, I just think we need to know who's gonna be here, that's all.
So let me ask a series of questions.
But I was thinking about wanting to be a food truck in a graduation series.
I mean, the majority is talking to the council. I'm not talking whether we have required a license or not, but does the council, does the majority, or is there consensus on the council, whether or not we should regulate food trucks?
If by regulate, you mean, should there be any rules at all?
Yes.
I think there should be some rules.
Regulate.
Sure.
I think there should be some rules.
Okay. Not speaking what the rules are at this point, I think that's, as we work through the process, and that might even be a subsequent discussion. Does the council feel that we should license them, meaning they need to come up to City Hall, go through some sort of process, fill out some sort of paperwork and we're issuing some sort of formal approval?
Is it a license or a permit, or are you one in the same?
I'm using the change, term interchangeably at this point. It would be a business license technically.
We never just use a different word as license, it's just not used license, just like, let's just make them check in or something.
Just give it as a permit, just so that.
You know, we, we, we do it.
And it gives you that opportunity to, they have to commit, then you verify.
Right.
That they have everything that they require, so it's automatic.
I would say no.
We do it for churches. We just issued a, a license for a temporary alcohol permit and other things. I mean, how is that any different?
They gotta pay for it.
Yeah.
We're not asking them to pay for this.
I think there's a lot more that goes around alcohol consumption than, than thus. At least that's my perception of what the difference would be. I don't know, staff can correct me if that's wrong.
Well, that's statutorily required.
Oh, okay, well, there you go.
Because of alcohol.
And gambling.
So when, when we have these nonprofit groups, whoever they are, doing the steak dinners and whatever, the chicken fries, do they have to get a food permit from the city to be able to do those temporary stands or whatever?
Well, they're not doing temporary, well, the ones that are occurring, let's say at Wagner Park Shelter and things like that are private events. And that's, that it's not a mobile unit, nor is it for profit. We, we don't allow for-profit sales or anything out of our facilities.
Okay, with the Father's Day cookout, for example.
With the pancake breakfasts.
With the pancake, for certain.
We're charging money.
They're serving food, I mean, do we require anything additional than purely on the food service?
Not purely on the food service, on certain events, we do require event permits.
Right.
That, that come forward. As part of that though, those permits usually address a lot of the nuisance aspects that would be associated with food trucks.
Right.
The hours of operation, how are they dealing with parking, you know, in this case, it might not be parking, but it's garbage and those types of things. So those permits are intended to, um, to let us know that it's happening and provide us an opportunity to dri- address the nuisance aspects of that, um, element. So that's the other thing to keep in mind related to food trucks is, you remember there's several reasons why they do it. As Haley pointed out, there's nuisance aspects to it, um, potentially garbage, where they're parking quality bikes. So let's say, I don't have a power source, but I need electricity, so I've got a generator running on the back of the truck as I'm sitting fifty feet from residential property. There's those aspects of it that if you choose to do so, might be incorporated as part of the regulations. Whether you regulate it or whether you license it or not, might be part of the regulations.
But would those be addressed in our regular ordinances that we already have, the parking stuff, the noise, the stuff, uh, whatever, that could be enforced other ways already?
It could be, but the question is whether or not it's addressed effectively, specific to that particular use. So your normal nuisance ordinances are considered to be rather broad and cheap, and the city attorney can speak to this, but I know from my experience at the enforcement. Yes, but the thresholds tend to be a lot more significant, um, related to it. This allows you to maybe drill down a little more specifically to that type of use and not have such a high threshold for some of those things.
And John, I think your points are more just practical, this is, this is our city, these are our rules, we expect you to follow our rules. And this, by licensing is our way of making sure people are following the rules, so we just run a good operation, right?
Yeah, but I don't think we should put to make a profit from them, right?
Right.
I mean, I don't think it should be even a fee, but, cause there's benefits to the truck being here for us too, right, as a community. So, but, but in the same instance, if you don't regulate it to an extent, then you're setting yourself up to have issues. And then to wait until you have an issue to regulate something?
Well, this regulation is licensing though. I, and I'm for regulating, I just don't know that I'm for licensing necessarily, because it just feels redundant.
If you don't, if you don't permit it, how are they gonna know what our, what our regulations are? Without, I mean, so the truck just comes in, plops over there in the weekend. And, and I've ran a lot of nonprofits over in my tenure. And I've, um, there's nothing worse than running a concession stand at an event for a nonprofit, and then all of a sudden the food truck pulls up ten feet from you and is taking two-thirds of your business. And, I mean, it, it's, it's, but in the same instance, there's, it's, it's hard to regulate that. That's why I said, if we're gonna, if we're gonna talk about community events, we need to define those. What, what is a community event? And, and then be able to enforce it, and we're gonna have to enforce it.
So the way I think with community events, the way that they do it is you would specifically state that, for example, we will not license them the last full weekend in June. That's the community festival, end of story. You would have fairly well predefined, um, we do have definitions for community events, but how do you know if they're interfering? They, they can't be in town, they can't be within a certain distance, I mean, there's those aspects of it. If the council chooses to license, I would suggest to the council that we do collect some nominal fee. We collect for almost everything that we should, we do for dog licenses, there's a greater public good served because of those. We collect them for fence permits, there's a greater public, there's everything that we license, we're doing it because of a greater public good and benefit to the community. But on all those other items, we decided that the person who is benefiting from, in this case profiting from that activity, should pay something to reasonably offset the burden to the general taxpayer for us to process it. So I would suggest something, I would suggest though that that dollar amount would not need to be very large.
And I would be on the side of not requiring any fee.
I'm, I still am on the side of not requiring any fee, but still want it regulated.
See, but then, it's having fun on both sides here. Cause then it's an unfunded mandate that we've created ourselves, so then we really can't complain when the state tells us to do stuff and we can't get reimbursed for.
Well, my, my concern with the fee piece is really how much, what exactly is the burden on staff? So it's, I guess it's difficult to be anti-fee without knowing exactly. But if it's something to the extent of, okay, staff takes an application and they spend maybe ten minutes on it or fifteen minutes on it, I, that's, I don't think there should be a cost for that, but if it's something that Sandy, or not Sandy, well, Sandy's still doing some work here. She has to spend four hours on something, that's a little bit of a different story. I just, I get the impression that this isn't, I mean, the comparison was made to the, to the, um, fire permit permitting fee. I don't know if you made that or who did that. I mean, there's really not, in that case, there really wouldn't be much staff time, but you tell me.
Something like the fire permit literally is like a few minutes worth of time. Something like a dog license, we do charge for, but, um, on those issues, a lot of times in the fee, it's not just the, the cost of permitting it. Let's say when John brings it in, and the time for me to look at it at the counter. It's also all the calls we get related to it, the time for the police department to go on. You're, you're covering the cost of that type of activity within the community, that is a burden, is a general burden. It's more than just the five minutes at the counter. It's paying for the dog tags, it's paying for, uh, a lot of those overhead types of items.
Sure.
Now, if you break it out on the number of permits we'd receive over time and the actual time that we receive, it's prob- my guess, because we don't have experience with this, but my speculation is it would not be very much. And so with all of our permit, we do not set fees based on making a profit, we base it on covering costs, or in most cases, less than, but at least an offset. So part of it was we'd make our best guess based on decisions for the council of what the, you know, what are we regulating how much? So that'll kinda dictate what the process is gonna be and what the cost for that's gonna be. We'd make our best guess. And just as we've done with like liquor licenses and other permits that we've made adjustments over the years, we would evaluate it after we have experience with it and make adjustments accordingly. If, if we did. But it's the council's, is the council's decision, we've made decisions in the past not to charge for particular items, campfire permits. We provide a lot of waivers on various permits when they're related to local nonprofit organizations, et cetera. So the council could choose to do so, I'm just suggesting, cause, you know, I'm the guy that. Is it charged to city finances and, and whatnot? I would recommend that we collect something because it's, it's a demand on our resources that's generated, that has a specific beneficiary that we can identify, and for most things, we charge for that.
But if I'm understanding you correctly, Tom, you're saying you really don't know at this point how much time would really go into something like this?
We can't make that call until you give us, until we know what, what, until you guys make decisions about what it would look like, then we can tell you what that dollar amount might be. So that's a deci- that's one of the decisions that could be made at the very, very end.
So maybe we set that part of it aside for now. So what we really need to do is figure out the regulation and the licensing, if that's something that we really wanna do so staff can move forward. So, I mean, I could probably be talking, licensing, I just, I hate overgoverning. You know, it's, I don't know.
Well, and then back to the, the New Prague and Prior Lake, I mean, obviously it's working, or it's okay. I did not do this or go down this path. I don't know, I mean, I just don't think it's something we need to necessarily rush into either. And if it's gonna be something we're not even charging a fee for, then what value really is there in requiring it? If we don't even think that there's enough time to be spent on it to charge a fee, when, I mean, that just seems silly to me.
Yeah. What other thoughts do, do we have?
Those are ready issues.
We've only had food trucks in town on an occasional basis at this point.
Right.
Um, I can tell you that they've never come to get a transit emergency license, and we've advised the businesses at which they've located that they've not been given a transit emergency license, so we just haven't. But we haven't gone and actively enforced it because we were beginning or in the process of this right now. So, we used our discretion to not push the issue until we clarified it. I mean, we don't go drop the hammer on somebody if in two months, we're gonna change the ordinance, so it wouldn't, wouldn't be an issue, so.
Would not get any complaints out of that.
No.
Can I just add? Something that's not taken in consideration is location. Food trucks generate noise, they generate smells, they generate trash, and they generate traffic. So, one of the potentials, and I have some personal experience with it, and then know of call load from them, from Shakopee. Um, you'll drive through Shakopee, you'll see trucks, you know, parked on the side of the road. And I happen to know a business owner who's been plagued with a truck on her border. So the, the business owner next to them is benefiting, they pay to park there. The parking lot is the next business owners where everybody parks, drops their trash, takes their customers parking, generates noise, generates smells for a professional business right next to it. I'm not telling you either way which way to go, but we forget they generate noise, they generate smells, they generate traffic, and they generate trash. And does it generate calls for the police departments? Yes, based on they generate noise, they generate trash, they generate parking issues and smells. And you can address them with other ordinances, but.
So Chief, how effectively can, um, would, cause we haven't had it here, but how effectively would the police department be able to address those issues through general nuisance ordinances?
It'd be really tough because we have to go over a generalness standard. Is the noise annoying or is it loud? And if you can imagine on a beautiful summer night, you wanna keep your windows open, but now there's a food truck, say, operating till nine, ten o'clock at night. Under the noise ordinance, that's not a loud ruckus of a hundred decibels, but it is an annoyance noise. And the ordinances would be iffy on that and how to just charge somebody just based on that noise. Now, smells, odors, are those subjective? I love the smell of tacos, I hate the smell of tacos. You know, if you can imagine the neighbors, and it, and it, I see this all boiling down is, do you protect your residents and what they experience and what they live with? Or is it, are you more protecting the right of a food truck to come in and help a, another business or another event? So location is huge, where they can plunk down and, and, and start selling. And, uh, I think that means everything. Prior Lake, New Prague, I don't know where they are, but if they're in a big public parking lot in the middle of a public square, and everybody knows that and it's accepted because it's been there, then you're not gonna generate calls, cause everybody knows, oh, it's food truck day. So new things, at first, we're gonna get a lot more calls until the public understands what's going on. And so I think that's a component of it you should consider. I'm not saying regulate or don't, it's just, they do generate calls and they do annoy people. And it's a quality of life issue. Some people love it because I can go get tacos and some people hate it because I have to. You're a unique downtown where you have houses above businesses and parking lots right next to houses and, and, you know, it's so intermixed, your residential and your business in our downtown. So where can they go, you know, do they have to be a hundred feet from a residence? Do they have to be two hundred feet? You know, it's, there's a lot to consider, and I'm not telling you should or you shouldn't, but I'm just saying it's not as easy as just, let's not regulate them and then hope there's no issues or, let's put a heavy regulation on them so they're, we don't burden anybody. So I have some experience with them in town. They're really successful in large areas where there's not a lot of people living next to them. And then they generate calls when they're really close to other residential areas and other businesses.
Have you had ones that are like inner residents where they're at the grad party or the, have you had calls from them?
Typically, they're not, that's a catering type issue, so, uh, no one's coming and driving, they're already there for the grad party. So if, you know, most people know during the grad season, oh, there's cars up and down my block, oh, it's so-and-so's grad party. So it's not as much there, um, because they're accepted and they're very short, like four hours, three, four hours. But a lot of the food trucks, if they have a hot area, they'll be there from lunchtime to dinnertime. Some of them just will do lunch in an industrial park. You know, if somebody went down, um, County Road Two to the trailer place and parked outside where all those businesses drive by, probably not gonna generate any calls, they're there for two, three hours and then go. But right downtown in the Clark Station or, you know, or next door, across the street at the gas station, you know, and then start selling there, it might generate some calls and. We're happy to take them, but that's just things to consider.
I feel like as we're discussing regulation, regulating and licensing, we're almost kinda talking about the same thing. Yeah, I, I'm, I'm having a difficult time really separating what licensing is from regulating, cause licensing feels like a function of regulating.
Reg- regulating is just having rules. Licensing is having a means to, um, one, make sure that the person that's out there, um, is following certain thresholds that you're looking for, for instance, they have their state licenses.
Yeah.
And as a mechanism in this case, to make sure they are aware of the rules before they start functioning in the city.
So how are, there were some cities that were, upon one of the prior slides, that regulate but don't license.
Yeah, so I actually only found one, which was Eden Prairie, I believe.
Yeah.
Um, and they have an ordinance, so it's in there to be code, you can go and look at it, but they just don't make mobile food units come in and get a license.
So what's the, I mean, what's the point of that? If you.
Just like any ordinance, you have to follow the rules of the city, curfew, what have you. We don't, we wouldn't go there and say, oh, do you have a permit? But if they're operating outside of the law, which they're obligated to know.
Right.
Ahead of time, check the ordinance, just like any other law. You're obligated to know the speed limit even though there might not be a sign right there.
Right.
So you just don't make them come to City Hall and do that, you make them follow rules, laws. So they don't have to necessarily come to City Hall, they just have to obey the rules. And if they're violating them, I could go up to them and give them a warning and say, hey, you're outside the ordinance. Or you could cite them if it was a really bad one, cause you're not following the rules.
So it's the presumption that the city of Eden Prairie has made that. So it's the presumption that the city of Eden Prairie has made that, hey, we're not going to license you, but we do have regulations. We expect that you're going to, on your own, figure out what those are and abide by them.
Yep.
Well, couldn't we just do something like that then? Because I mean, how often are we going to have to go check on a food truck?
We don't.
Right, well, that's what I mean.
So one of the options you could have is that you could put the rules in place. If you find out that every time, um, our men and women who are showing up and they're getting the, oh, I didn't know thing. Well, then maybe you do think about licensing at that point. But if, so there are, I mean, the, the purpose, one of the, one of the purposes to license is to ensure that there's no excuse for not knowing it because you're provided with information when you came in. And it's not uncommon to have to get a license when you go to candy store. But at the same time, um, there's nothing says we have to. We could start with presumption that people will follow, one, not create problems to start with, and will do the research ahead of time. That being said, we've had food trucks in town multiple times. And they're supposed to come in and follow the rules and get permits and they.
They don't.
And they don't. I mean, from a practical standpoint, the experience that we, in my career that I've had on similar issues, is that those, they're going to come in, if they don't have to get a license, they're just going to come in and do the business, how they're going to do their business, and they're going to leave. And I would guess for most operators, because they operate in other communities, they're going to be good. But they may not be aware that you can't be here, you can't park there for that period of time. These are the hours of operation, um, et cetera. So that's why I'm saying if, if we were to regulate it and if we were to require some form of a license. One of the things from staff that we feel would be important is that would allow us to convey what the rules are. And it's very much, I think, what Councilmember Timmerman said. It's like our fire permit. Fill it out on the front side, rules are on the backside. You get your copy of the permit, there you go. You've seen the rules, they've read it, they had to look at it when they reviewed the permit.
And it's one thing, I think, for a business owner who is here and knows where the city ordinances are and is familiar with how the city operates. It's not, I think, for these mobile units, you think about it, how many cities are they going to? And to take the time to figure out what everybody's rules are, they are not doing it.
You become more educational if you have an ordinance as a law enforcement you can enforce. So, I mean, you can, right? You can be heavy handed and, oh, you're operating, here's your $150 ticket and now get out. It, you become in more educational. Hey, did you know this? No, I didn't know this. Well, leave or here's a warning. Whereas if you have the permit, they know the rules. And then when you go to them and they're violating, you see their intent to violate more than just non-intent. And so that's, I think, what Tom is saying is when you make them come in at least and get the rules, when you know their intent if they're violating. And it's to disobey or ignore what the rules are set up. Whereas if you don't, you just have the ordinances and regulations, it's harder to be more enforcement oriented and follow the rules.
This isn't, this is just a pure discussion. So you're just looking for direction, you're not looking for emotion of any sort. But I would venture to guess that if staff was making a recommendation, the recommendation would be regulate, license, and charge a fee. Does that seem somewhat accurate?
No, I think it would depend on what staff person you talk to, to be honest. Um, what, what their thoughts would be and then that would be filtered through their experience and their, in, in their career.
Okay.
I.
What's your opinion?
My opinion, honestly? I think we should have some form of regulation that presents nuisance elements from that particular type of activity to make it easier to enforce when there are nuisances. So for example, the trash issue that the chief was talking about. The trash is being dropped by the people who are visiting the stand, not from the stand themselves. There's no action to be taken against them. Are we going to have a police department sit there and start issuing tickets for people who put their napkin on the ground or their cup falls out?
Which would require a trash receptacle.
Exactly, yeah.
That probably.
Which people, if it's there and it's handy, they will automatically, I mean, most people will commonly take care of that issue. That's not saying that all issues will be addressed. I think based on my experience that for the reasons that have been discussed, you need to have some means to ensure that they understand what our rules are here. And a lot of it, I think, is going to be hours of operation where they can operate is going to be the biggest issue. And to do that, I think the license would do that. Again, I don't think it has to be a cumbersome process. I think it's the type of thing that can be done at the front counter. And I think it's the type of thing that, um, following the general philosophy we have for most of our other permits and licenses, we require, we have them pay for the cost of, of the service that we have to render, which is very specific to them. But again, at this point, I don't think we're talking about anything that would be cumbersome.
So not as a staff recommendation, but in your personal opinion, you would be for licensing is what I'm hearing.
Yeah, given my experience.
Given your experience.
Now ask Renee what she thinks.
Renee? I mean, I'm going to ask everybody, so.
Sure, I would suggest amending the ordinance so that we, uh, there are regulations or at a minimum they're exempted from the trans immersion, but I would not, I would not license them.
You would not license them? But you would rather. Josh? Andrea?
I would regulate, uh, for the nuisance issues. And also consider how, you know, maybe there are issues, how far do you want them to sit from restaurants in town? Parking issues. And I would recommend licensing so that they know what the rules are. It, it's really more for your benefit to make sure that they have their, their licensing in place and they know your, your rules. It can be very limited.
Chief?
Uh, I am a public servant. I take my direction from the council and my boss.
Chief, your council is asking for your opinion.
City Administrator Tom, Thomas Terry. Uh, I honestly, um, I think we'll happily enforce anything you decide. And I'm, I'm trying to be ambiguous because I don't want my personal opinion to get in on it. I, as a professional, I'll take your direction. I believe what the citizens want are most important. If they want it enforced strictly and it's, it's becoming a problem and they direct me through my boss to say, you know what, this is becoming a big issue, I'll enforce it. But I, I'm, I'm honestly in the middle. I, I could see going either way. I will do whatever the direction of the council, because I think you should decide.
From a law, and we will, and I appreciate that. From a law enforcement perspective, is one version easier than another?
I feel that in order to protect the quality of life issues, if, I, I really liked, that was new to me when I came here, the, the burn permit. It's a neat idea. Anybody, if you're going to, because we have those issues about burning. And if you have a permit, um, you know the laws. And if you're violating that, I can go, well, you signed right here. It's really neat. It shows your intent to kind of bother people. And so I, I think that's a neat idea of not being cumbersome. It's, it's give and take. You want to, you want to come sell to our residents, you have to do right by our residents. And you have to not dump trash on them and not put odors in the, you know what I mean? It's, I think it's just a respectful thing to come down, get our rules, get our regulations and, and then operate within those rules and regulations.
Haley, you got an opinion?
Yeah, I do. I think that we need some sort of regulation. At this time, I'm not sure that we should license them and that's for a number of reasons. One being, as someone, not personally who operates a food truck, but someone that does operate a food truck, I think they know enough and they operate enough places that they know to look for an ordinance if they're going to a new city. I mean, these ordinances are becoming more and more popular, more and more cities have them. And so I think just like as a business owner, they know to do that. And I hope that they would do that and follow the law if it's there. But I also think that licensing them now, and again, it depends on the fee and if we require one or not. But if it's too great of a fee, it might just like steer them away from coming here at all. Because as our size right now, I don't know if there's just a big enough draw to come here or if they'll get enough profits to make up for that fee if we require it. So regulate, but not license.
Yeah. Rich?
I'm a dirt and water guy. If they want to hook up the city sewer or water, you let me know.
They're tucking their waste into the sewer. Oh, that's a regulation.
Oh, I gotta, we take them right up to Public Works. We've got a manhole they can do that. We charge them a nice fee of 250 bucks.
I, I wanted to do that and go run and get input from staff. Because one, you really don't get to do that in this kind of setting very often. Generally, we get a staff report with recommendations. But y'all are thinking independently, so it's helpful to get some of those different perspectives. I don't know if that changed any of our views or anyone individual's views or opinions or thoughts? Because we still got to come to some sort of direction that provides staff.
But is operationally speaking, and you're, uh, I think, giving them a very good benefit of the doubt that they're going to know the ordinances and take the time to understand them. Let's say, assume, maybe they don't. So then they're operating, they pull up for lunch, one of us, you guys see them operating. I just, I wonder what our process is going to be. They probably are only going to be down here one time, maybe a couple of times in their lifetime because they're going to see if it works or doesn't.
You had your chance.
What I'm saying, do, do then we go and we, we tap, hey, 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 have you checked in? And then we make them go drive and then they're just going to continue to drive a 35 and get the heck out of town. Or if they're going to see the, we're going to see their intent, they're going to stop in the City Hall, they're going to check the box. I mean, I just, I, I don't know how many people will actually know before they come here. And maybe they will, maybe, maybe you're right. I just, I don't know.
It just occurred to me that they're really not going to know they need to come and get a license necessarily either.
When I know a billboard that says.
So you're still going to be going, talk to them, you know you need a license. Oh, I didn't know, so have you really gained that? I don't know.
All right. Can I say something? Please. So we really have nothing to hardcore to discuss at this point.
Right.
So wouldn't we be better off as a council to instruct the staff to go back, take a look at the amendments to the ordinance?
And for regulation and for permitting. Then, when they come back with those recommendations, then we can discuss whether we want to charge for the permit and all the, all the specifics to it, right? Right now, we, we don't. We're, we're all, all over the board and we simply aren't, you know, discussing anything more than our opinions at this point.
Right. So we, we could take that approach. So what I've heard is that the majority of the council feels there should be some regulation. I mean, there should be some rules.
I think so.
We can take establish, establishing rules. The question, the, the question about whether or not we license them is separate. We could indicate, okay, if we're going to license them, this is what, it's kind of like a à la carte. Here's the rules, you can review that independently. If you're going to license, this is what the licensing requirement looks like. One area that will take some time to work through and we're happy to take a stab on it is whether or not you want to put any limitation on them during like the community festival. Because that's going to be its own little separate subsection. And to be honest, I don't want to have Haley spend a lot of time working on it if there's already council consensus on how we're going to handle that. So I would like to ask that question too before we finish tonight.
Specific to community events?
Yeah.
I disagree. I, I think it's a benefit to the city, the community, to those events. And I think that's, yeah.
John?
Honestly, I'm crying on the fence. If, if, if we're going to allow it during the community event, then there needs to be a location for them, assigned specifically that doesn't interfere with the event.
I could go along with that.
I could go along with that.
I could go along with that too. I've done plenty of fairs and events and set up booths and you're always assigned a spot.
And I think that's something to pay a lot of attention to. Because I think we do need to be sensitive of the nonprofits. This is a big deal for them. And it's probably a bigger deal than we're even really acknowledging. I mean. Look, kids getting super nervous and think about this weeks leading up to this. And that's really reflective of our community in a lot of ways. So while we do want to enhance our events and, yeah, I have said earlier, I like the idea of providing more options that could get people up to more things. I think your point is really well taken. It's, let's give careful thought to how we actually work with them within our community events.
So I know other communities, according to Haley's research, do have restrictions during community events. To be honest, not every community, maybe ask their city attorney. City attorney, can we restrict, can we provide, create that type of restriction where we can say you can't operate in town during these dates? Or you can operate in town, but you have, can't operate within this geographic area, so to speak.
Should we just say they can't operate then? Because this isn't a ginormous town where there's going to be multiple areas where there's going to be, generate enough traffic for them to even want to come in? So we might as well just say.
But the biggest thing is if they stay away from Wagner Park. Because you know that Wagner Park is where those nonprofits are going to be selling.
Well, I guess how far? Could they park in front of Fish Rock? Or is that too close to Wagner? And if they can't park there, can they park in City Hall? I mean, so then would we just say, don't come near the.
You have to have an walking distance, I think, of the beer truck.
I think it's more of who we let in and.
But I, I think we're, we could be putting the cart a little bit before the horse on that. Because if I understand what's being asked, Tom, it's, is this something that we should consider or not? And I, I think what I'm hearing from everybody is that, yeah, maybe there, there should be some consideration. I, with you, Josh, if, if we're really going to put them in a spot where they have like one eight by eights or foot spot somewhere, then, then really we're just, what are we, we're wasting our time. So we would have to work through all that, but to come up with something reasonable.
We, we can come up with something as staff. I think what we need to know is do you want them in town at all? Or you want them in town, but we just don't want them in a proximity. We'll figure out how to work the code language or something that's practical that you guys can tweak within certain proximity of the events. You can define a geographic area that encompasses the downtown area. Or you can't be without these.
City blocks. I mean, would you go that specific?
Right. Yeah. And then the council can determine whether is Fish Rock is too far away or not. That's where you get into a determination as to what's appropriate. But we can craft something. I think we just need to know intent as a starting point and then we can craft something for you guys to respond to.
And I think we just got to be careful because we don't want to say non-residential either or it can't be residential because I think a golf course and I think you'll park in there in Glenboro in front of a golf event or something would be pretty cool. And I mean, unless we restricted it to the parking lot, now we've restricted parking in the golf car. So we don't want to say you have to park in there either. So just taking that into consideration.
Haley, did I understand it correctly? But I thought there was almost conflicting, um, feedback from the Parks Commission, CCE regarding that. Because I thought I heard one, uh, group say that they, you know, during family fun, I had to park in it, want to have food trucks there.
Renee, would you mind sitting up there so I can pick you up in a minute?
On the stakeholder feedback, the CCEC has private property, yes, even during events. Public property, city-owned public parks, not during events.
That was CCEC?
Yep.
And then the Parks Commission, did they have a difference?
Just had yes and yes, and during community events. So yes to public property, yes to public rights of way, no to community events. But yes to farmer's market.
They were also supportive of allowing like food trucks during private events at Wagner Park. So if someone rents the shelter, then they could invite a food truck. So they're sort of operating during events, but it's the private aspect.
I just think, well, we're living in the weeds. Because I could have a private event at Wagner, invite a part, invite a food truck or a couple of food trucks down. Can my neighbors then come up and buy something from them? Or am I hosting a catering party or catering event that, and who's going to check? I mean, if we have all of a sudden all the neighbors coming up, they could think that they're part of the private event, but they're not. I don't really care. I just want to have as much people there as possible, whatever.
This kind of feels like the chicken, backyard chicken discussion.
Yeah. Yep.
It's, and how many applications have we gotten so far?
We got one.
We got one, all right.
This is an issue though where we do have food trucks and we have had, uh, this is an issue that I gave to Haley as a project because this question comes up every food truck season for like the last six or eight years. It didn't one regard or another in our ordinance simply doesn't address, I mean, that's really what drove it originally, does not address food trucks effectively. And once you dig into the issue, all this multitude of other questions come up as soon as you do it. Open Pandora's box, you have all these policy questions that come up as part of it.
Based on what we have discussed, I think there are some consensus in some things. And do you feel you have information for staff to keep, continue working on this?
Yeah, so let me summarize what I think we heard. One, the council feels that there should be some rules. So we can, we can work on that. We'll take a stab at it using our best judgment and staff consensus as to what might seem to make sense. for you guys to react to. Two, we will prepare something related to licensing, but to be honest, that's not terribly extensive. It just says that a license is required. But I think on what we draft, we'd be able to say, hey, if you want to charge a fee, this is probably what it might be. And I don't see under any circumstances it's going to be anything that is going to be burdensome to any business.
And it wouldn't be something staff would spend a ton of time on for this purpose in case we just decide we just want to cut it.
Correct.
Okay.
The third question that I don't know that I heard consensus on is do you want to provide some sort of restriction during community events? We'll figure out something, to create something for you to respond to. But I heard, I don't know that we had consensus on that or direction on that.
See, I thought I did. I thought I heard there was some general consensus of some level of restriction.
Is that?
That's where we were all over the board, is defining what that level of restriction was.
Okay, so the council would like to see some level of restriction during...
If I'm wrong.
The majority of the council would.
Okay.
But now, okay, here's devil's advocate. What if CCEC this year doesn't have those nonprofits that want to come in and sell food? Now we have an opening for food trucks to come in. So...
To be honest, that's, that's an easy part of it. Um, I think you would...
You'd change your ordinance.
Yeah, there's a number of organizations. I'm part of a nonprofit organization that we regularly have, um, a food truck come into our events and we take a cut.
And it would permit, and the way we would handle it is if it's under a, it's under a public event permit, it's permitted underneath that or it's okay if it's part of that event itself.
Okay. But I'm just saying, what if we write this so that there's restrictions because we always have these nonprofits down there at Wagner Park? And they decide nobody is going to be down there this year, but we've just restricted per our ordinance that they, the food trucks can't come down there.
So no food trucks within this area during this community event unless permitted by, through the community event?
Yeah, that's how, that's how we'd handle it.
Okay, got it, got it.
Because I can actually see that once we get into this, and there has been discussions in the past, for instance, with the CCEC, that at Wagner Park, one way to enhance it would be to possibly bring in food trucks and get, get a part of the take. So it'd both be a fundraiser and would also enhance the event. But their concern would be that you have food trucks hanging on Park Street.
Yeah.
Just right over there. And they would take advantage of all the time and effort to create the event. And then they just come in and they just kind of take, they, they pull away from the take. So you might say, okay, other food trucks can be in town during the festival, great. But you can't be on these streets or on these blocks. So I think we as staff, we can craft that and address with some of those basic issues. The question is, do you want to provide that type of restriction during community events? And is it for, is it all events? Because that becomes a little bit harder or just the community festival?
I think it has to be just the community event. What about picnic in August or? The, not that you come down, I guess it is food trucks in the winter. I mean, Christmas stuff or...
If they're, if they're normally restricted from being, uh, just doing business out of public parking lots anyways, it'd be difficult for them to do it at a community picnic anyways. And as the city, during the community picnic, we may want to bring somebody in as part of the event. I don't know what the CCEC thinks of the Parks Commission, but my opinion is if somebody really wants to try and get business by parking way over on Park Street during that event, you know, okay, if somebody wants to walk that way to far to get a, you know, to get a brisket, great.
Have fun.
Have fun. And it would still provide an enhancement to the event. So, but that's just my opinion. I think we can address all of that when we're, when we're working through. What I'm kind of saw some body language is that initially maybe what we propose is just restrictions around this community festival time period.
Yeah, I'm sure we'll pick it apart and get a pain in the butt for you guys.
No, no, this is the kind of direction that we, we need it to be able to move forward of that. So... Haley, do you have what you mean?
I do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, John, yeah. All right. Anything additional from Parks or CCEC?
No, I spoke with Mark this week and he said he did not have anything specifically in the council.
Uh, the community report's scale is not for...
Two weeks?
Two weeks.
No, a week?
It's two weeks. I think executive team is next week.
Okay.
MBTA?
October tenth.
High thirty-five.
It must be the fourth, eleventh, I don't know, it's in a couple of weeks.
Okay. We had Chamber already, no downtown meeting. Uh, discussion by council. I have one thing, but does anybody else have anything? The only thing I have is just a relatively brief, uh, I don't know if it's a reminder, but the April twenty-fifth meeting is going to be kind of a hefty meeting. One of the big things that we're hoping to spend some time on is the roundabout, two ninety-one roundabout. I really want to make sure we have full attendance from the council. We were originally going to look at one other date, but we moved it so we could have all five of us here. So, um, if anyone thinks they might have something coming up, please just let Tom know and so we can kind of work, we can figure something out. So that's all I had.
John can answer a question. Did you say the twenty-fifth?
Yes. Kate, it's not going to be available on the line, so we're...
So we're moving around lots of...
Yes, to the twenty-fifth.
I wasn't trying to call Kate out.
No, I...
Tom said that.
Hey, I did my email. I sent it my family's supposed to.
Okay.
And you guys aren't part of that, that discussion?
We literally just had that, so we're in the office, sorry.
Anyone else have anything?
Motion to adjourn?
Second?
Sorry.
My term, second by Bird, on favor.
Aye.